Yeah, that was another repeat.
It was.
We do better or worse than the Career Center about the same?
It's hard to tell.
It was probably about the same.
Yeah, makes you wonder how all those people that are doing like those, you know, like musical medleys and things like that on Zoom. I don't know how they pull that off.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Can you like dub it later for us?
Yeah, exactly.
Sounds amazing.
All right, item 1.2 is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Done move. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Okay, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, item 1.3 is the approval of the March 11th, 2020 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Good couldn't have it.
What we did the other day was whoever makes the motion says, so move Charles. So it helps Tara note.
Oh.
Got it.
Okay.
All right, any discussion or anything? Nope.
Okay, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, item 2.1 is the Springboro Education Association Report. Do we have anybody on from the SEA? No? Okay, item 2.2 is the Springboro Classified Employees Association Report. Do we have anybody on from the SCEA? Okay, I do not believe in item 2.3 that we have any prearranged public participation, so we move to item 2.4. Is there anybody on the phone, members of the public, that would like to comment on any of the agenda items for this evening?
Tara, they would have to do so in the chat, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
If they want to, they could put something in the chat and then we can, that way I. If they have questions on.
Okay, so if anybody has, I would like to make a comment on any of the agenda items, they can go ahead and enter that into the chat. I'm not seeing anything come through.
I can monitor it and let you guys know if something comes through.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Great.
Okay, then we will move into the work session. So I believe the first order of business, item 3.2, is an update on graduation, and we will turn it over to Mr. Martin. You're on mute, Kyle.
Tara, you have to unmute him.
I got it.
Oh.
Yep, thank you, thank you, Jamie. Just a little update on graduation. First, for our current plans as of now, typically May 23rd was our graduation date. We have not heard anything from Wright State yet, but we are obviously assuming the school's being closed, but that will be postponed. For our tentative date, we do have a date of June 27th that has been set aside at the Nutter Center under all the same arrangements and structure. That is our Plan B. We are monitoring that closely, and we'll determine if we need to have a Plan C, which we have kind of been brainstorming and discussing just a little bit the last week or so. So, you know, my, I guess my big thing for that is we are going to hold out hope that at some point we can have a graduation for our seniors. So we have a few creative plans in mind, but obviously we will have to follow the governor's mandates and orders as we move through the month of May, the month of June, to determine what we can or can't do. So we do have a couple of things, and I'll just throw one thing out there that's being discussed. Obviously, nothing is set in stone, but we have even discussed if mandates and orders allow, we've even discussed holding graduation outside at Watkins Stadium. Now, once again, we would have to follow everything that the governor Dewine is telling us that we need to do. So there will have to, some things will have to, improvements will have to be made, and things will have to be communicated to let us know that we can do that. But that is something that we have discussed. I've also brought up, if, you know, some options as far as just about the amount of people at graduation, if it's something that we are able to do outside, and we have the ability to do a few different ceremonies, to get the number of grads down, the number of, you know, parents and grandparents and friends down to a number that will meet what that mandate is, that is something also that we would be willing to do. And my honest opinion, I'm going to do everything I can to hold a graduation for the seniors. I just think it's extremely important. I think it's important they have closure to, not just their high school career, but their academic career pre-K through 12. So the challenge with that is just staying up to date with the mandates and then having things in place to where if we have to make a decision and do turn something around in three weeks, we might have the ability to do that. So we are in constant communication. We're talking multiple times a week about this and trying to kind of stay in front of it. So that's, that's something that we have, we have been discussing. So that's just a little bit of update on just the actual ceremony and kind of where we're at with that. As far as the graduation requirements, the updates have come out with the graduation requirements. It's a pretty lengthy document. We kind of, as a team, kind of created a document for guidance counselors and administrators to follow concerning our current seniors for their, for their graduation requirements. As you know, there were, they have to have 22 credits to graduate. They also have to meet the EOC at the time and the alternate pathways as well. The state has came out, they've said that if a student was on track to graduate as of March 17th, they are going to graduate regardless of what happens fourth quarter. So what this means is if they had met their EOC alternate pathways, their grades were passing, and they're on track to meet all 22 credits, they're going to meet the grad requirement regardless of what their performance is, regardless of what happens fourth quarter. So that's, they've been very clear about that. Also, we have a little bit of a scenario where if a student was on track to graduate with grades, meeting all 22 plus credits, but they at the time that we closed didn't have the points or had not met the pathway, those students would still be considered to be on track, and they will graduate as well regardless of what happens fourth quarter. So the other scenario we have is students that were not on track to graduate as of March 17th credit-wise, they're going to need to make sure that they pass all necessary classes and courses fourth quarter to graduate. What's that going to look like is this, if a student struggled to complete work during fourth quarter, there will be a plan that we put in place to allow the students to be successful. This plan will be developed, created, and communicated by student, teacher, counselor, administrator, and the parent. So that is something that we're going to make sure that we do for all of our seniors, to make sure that we are getting, reaching every single student as far as graduation is concerned. So our counselors have actually created, they had a list already of things that they're, that they have been monitoring for their students as far as graduation is concerned. So that's something they've been doing. They are just, they're updating those documents as we go. For example, when we were looking at alternate pathways for some of the students who had not met the points, our guidance counselors at the high school did a great job of creating a list of students that needed to meet those pathways, whatever pathway it was, so we can document that. They are now taking that document, if they're on track to graduate, and then updated them to a green color to let, to let everybody know that they have met that requirement. So they're closely tracking that. According to the state, we have to have documentation of some of those students as far as where they fall. So that's the document that they're using for that. So that document's the same, it's just they're updating that. And then there's also maybe a kid or two that they might have to add to that document, depending on what's going on right now during fourth quarter, if they weren't on track to graduate on March 17th. So that's the document that we're using, and that's kind of how we're tracking our current seniors for graduation.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions? Folks on the call?
Are we talking about grades at another point? I forgot.
Yeah.
That's later.
Yeah, yeah.
That's later. Okay, okay, I have a question about that later. Okay, no, that's it.
Anybody else? Any questions?
No, but I do have something real quick that Carrie, she said, how are people supposed to ask questions if they're on the phone? Because I don't know that you can type in the chat, I don't know how that works. So I said, that was a good question. I don't know if maybe we can text somebody and they can let us know if there's any questions.
They can send me an email.
They can send you.
Yeah.
Okay, smarshall@springborough.org and.
Yeah.
Order that.
Yep, I'll check that out. And when it comes through, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
Lays new trails here with Zoom.
I know.
Any other questions, Mr. Martin?
I just appreciate you guys looking at so many different options, because everyone requires, I know, a huge amount of planning, but looking at possibly Watkins and smaller numbers, because I agree with you, graduation is just really important. So thank you for thinking ahead at all the different options. I think it means a lot to families.
I think I'm on.
You got to hang up your phone, Dave, if you're on.
All right, all right.
You're so cute.
Hi.
Excited to see you.
Hey, Dave.
Good job, Dave.
Good to see you.
So I have a few choice words, but there's probably other people on here that I should.
Yeah.
If you.
Yes.
I was going to echo what you said, Mrs. Bab, that just appreciate, I know there's a lot of work that's been done to this point and will be done as we go forward, just to, to try and pull this off. So appreciate the team's creativity and agree that, you know, this is an important event, and I appreciate that we're doing everything in our power to try and ensure that we're able to give that to our seniors. And particularly with the graduation too. I mean, the fact that you guys are, you know, working so closely with students to help make sure that they're on track and meeting their requirements, and just appreciate your dedication to help them through this.
Yeah, not a problem. It's, you know, the, the graduation, the tracking is just, it's just challenging, because there's so many options, and kids fall in so many different categories. So it's just really ensuring that we're keeping a very concrete list of, of students that are in a, in a situation where we need to make sure we're closely monitoring them. Like I said, our counselors have done a phenomenal job with that. You know, the challenge with the ceremonies, we have, there are a lot, some other high schools that are doing things really late in July. And, you know, it's something we have continued to discuss as far as if we have a Plan C, when exactly does that fall into place to where, you know, kids aren't going off to college, and you're missing a lot of opportunities for kids to participate. The other challenges too, and I've tried to kind of communicate this in my update, is just I want parents and students to have plans and schedule any type of vacation, getaways that they can go on in the summer, but also understand that it might be something where we communicate three and a half weeks out that something has changed, and we're able to do something, we're going to go after and get it done. So it's just really trying to balance that and trying to make sure that what we do engulfs as many students and families as we can as far as that time is concerned. So that's going to be a challenge, but something that we're going to continue to work towards.
Well, we communicate out to families that we, like clearly, once we know for sure that we won't be doing the May, I mean, I know that, that we're giving our backup date, but that we are looking at other plans if that isn't an option. So they know that we are working towards having other plans in place if that doesn't work.
Yes, yes. My, my plan is once we get May 23rd kind of set in stone, because we haven't had any, Wright State has not contacted us yet about it. I'm obviously assuming it's not going to happen. Once that's postponed and we're moving to the June 27th, then we'll be a little bit more detailed on just some things that we're brainstorming as far as potential. And we will also be giving some dates for that as well, just to try to get something on the calendar. So it gives people a bit of direction.
And we, you know, we will communicate that we will very much be able to give diplomas and transcripts if people have to move forward with, with life and they need that for college or whatnot. We're not holding that, that documentation.
Great, thank you.
Scott, do we have any questions that have come through?
Hold on, let me unmute them.
Sorry, screen wouldn't pop up. No, I have not seen any.
Okay.
Okay. Then I think we can move then into item 3.3 through 3.5, I believe all belong to Mrs. Cook. So 3.3 is the technology purchase.
How do you turn this up real quick? How do you, volume?
Is it just on your regular computer you can turn it up?
I don't know. I thought there was something down at the bottom. That's all right, go on.
All right, Mr. President, members of the board, for the technology portion, I have for you two quotes. One is for Chromebooks for Dennis Elementary that are part of our replacement cycle. So all of these Chromebooks will replace what we do have in current use. The other quote is for clever touchboards, stands, and document cameras. Both quotes fall within this year's technology purchase as well as the five-year forecast for technology.
Any questions on any of the technology purchases?
Are the clever touchboards what we saw at the junior high being piloted when we did the walkthrough? Or what's the difference of what those offer up that's different than the smart boards?
That's a great question, and I'm happy to answer that. The clever touchboards will replace our current smart boards, some of which have been in circulation for 14 years when we did our upgrades to our buildings. Most of these boards will go into kindergarten and third grade classrooms. However, some of them will replace broken boards at other elementary grade levels. Next year, you will see a request for boards that will replace those in the secondary grades. So we're trying to play this out by grade level where we're doing a replacement per the grade level, so we have a better replacement cycle. But these are replacing 14-year-old boards, and they do have a lot more capability than our current smart boards do. Smart technology requires us to upgrade our software with a cost annually. These do not have that high cost over the, over the years that we use them. They have a much longer warranty and lifespan on them.
So are they, they're not what we saw at the junior high being piloted? Is it different?
You would have seen several different types of boards at the secondary level, and we have not made a decision yet. So you may have seen a clever board. We had several different boards that were being piloted at the secondary level. So if you didn't see a clever, you would have seen something very similar with the same functionality.
Okay.
They look like a television set. These will all be on movable stands, so that there's a lot of teacher flexibility where they can move them within the classroom. This purchase also includes, in addition to kindergarten and third grade, it does include 15 boards that will be utilized in special education resource classrooms that will be paid for out of restoration funds. So a portion of the second quote will be paid for out of special education funding through granting, through grant dollars and restoration.
What happens to the other smart boards?
The smart, the smart boards that are no longer functional will be taken out of the district for recycle. Those that are still functional or have parts that we're able to take apart to repair those that are still in use, we will part out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you like me to move on, Mr. President?
Yep, sorry, I muted myself there. Yeah, are there any other questions, discussion on the 3.3 purchase of technology? Okay, then I think we can move to 3.4, the College Credit Plus Agreement.
All right, this is one College Credit Plus Agreement that is the memo of understanding that you annually have before you. This one is for Sinclair College, and it is an agreement for our students to participate in College Credit Plus at the floor pricing of $41.64 per credit hour. And these courses will be starting in the summer, so our students will begin coursework next month.
Is that floor, the credit hour, is it similar to the current school year? Is it change versus the 1920 academic year?
No, it is still the floor pricing at the $41.64.
So the floor itself hasn't changed, got it.
Right.
Okay.
So we have to approve other colleges at some point soon?
Yes, I do have requests out for the other ones, for their MOUs. They type those themselves, and then they send them to us for approval. So I do not have from the other colleges those documents yet, but I have requested them.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on 3.4? Okay, I think we can move then to 3.5 on the textbook adoptions.
All right, Mr. President, members of the board, I have for you several quotes for textbooks for next year. Six years ago, we came to you with similar requests, and these are for secondary adoptions. We have a grade six through eight adoption for English Language Arts from HMH, which is Houghton Mifflin Harcourt. We have a Spanish seven through 12 with that same company adoption request. We have a Pearson adoption request in six, eight, as well as nine, 12 on separate quotes, as well as Vista for French with seven, 12. All of these companies are companies that we have agreements with in other subject areas or are continuations of agreements that expire at the end of the school year.
When was the last time we replaced Spanish and French?
Six years ago.
It was six years ago, okay.
Yes.
And this is their current.
Agreement.
This is the current, we're with these companies currently?
We are currently with Vista for Spanish and French. Our Spanish teachers have requested to go with HMH instead of Vista. Our French teachers would like to continue with Vista.
Okay. Any other questions on item 3.5, the textbook adoptions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I do, I do have a question, Jamie. I'm sorry. How much, how, what portion of this textbook adoption is an online portion? And how many actual hardcore, like hard textbooks are part of this?
That's a great question. We are again going with entirely online access for all grade levels, all subjects, so that's not changing. And any new company adoptions where the textbook has not changed, we're ordering 35 hard copy texts per classroom.
So every one of these classrooms has a hard, has a copy, a full set for the class, in the classroom, but then the students access it at home online?
That depends on the adoption. So for instance, with our grade six through eight mathematics, there is not a hard copy text, but rather a soft copy workbook the students work from, as well as online. However, starting in algebra, there is a hard copy text. So I don't want to mislead you. Those textbooks that are available in hard copy, we have 35 in each classroom. Some are not available, such as the six, eight mathematics, that's all online entirely and was for the previous six years.
So the parents aren't paying a workbook fee on top of this, though, for the soft covers?
Within the mathematics, they are not. That's included as part of the adoption. When it comes to the Spanish and French, they do pay that workbook fee.
Right, right.
Some of our English courses use an additional workbook, which is consumable, that the parent does pay for.
Okay, okay.
But we're not paying tech fees, no tech fees. We pick up all of that.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
You're very welcome.
Miss Cook, anybody else? Okay, we can move to item 3.6, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
I was going to give an update on DPC real quick.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Yep, Board President, members of the board, District Parent Council, obviously, we have not met since we had a closure in the district. However, we did have some discussion with DPC members about the Epic Teacher of the Year Award. It was, everybody was in unanimous agreement to continue that for this year. We moved the nomination process online, and all of that went out today. So what we did was we set up a nomination form, distributed it out to the community. The principals will be able to share that in their newsletter. It'll go in the district newsletter. It was across social media. So everybody will be able to vote online. Then DPC will meet virtually in May to do the selection process, and then the Epic Teacher of the Year Awards will go out from there. Any questions on that? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Any other committee reports, or is that, is that it? Okay, so for 3.7, does anybody else have any other work session, other business? Any questions, Mr. Marshall, that have come through?
No questions.
Okay, then I guess we can move into the Treasurer's Report. I can turn it over to Ms. Floyd.
Yes, thank you. I know we're almost done with April, but we're actually reporting on tonight for approval is the March 2000, or March 31st, 2020, for report for financials. When we ended the month of March, we ended with just under $4 million in revenue for the month, which was down a little bit due to the Warren County settlement. It's typically received at the end of March, but we didn't receive it until early April. They were just a little bit behind with the COVID delay, trying to get everything out. So but right on, we're right on par in terms of revenue for the year and what we anticipated. So I don't see many changes on that. For the expenditure side, we have been consistently down on salaries for the year. There's several different things that we are realizing that have been occurring during the year. We have been saving a significant amount of money on overtime and extra time due to some operational changes that we have put into place for the year. We also have several staff members who are on unpaid leave of absences, where the subcosts for those staff members are being paid out of purchased services. So we're, have a significant amount of changes coming out of that area as well, and then some reductions and lateral moves that came in a little bit under anticipation. So during the May forecast, we'll definitely be realizing some savings there that will help our cash balance improve for the year, as well as kind of close in our deficit spending numbers. Benefits are coming in fairly on par. We did have a high leverage cost this year over last year. It was $47,000 higher. So we're, we have a little bit of a variance there. If you remember, I've kind of communicated at several board meetings earlier this year that we were going over in our purchase service area as to expected, what we expected because of additional scholarships in the special education area, but with some changes and now also anticipated changes in subcosts and utility costs and things like that in the purchase service area. I actually believe we're going to come in under budget now, so that's also good news. Our supplies, although at this very moment, they look like they're under, we haven't paid for our large textbook adoptions that you're going to be approving tonight. So once those are approved, those will be ordered, and that's going to be a little over $400,000 for those items. So you'll definitely see the supplies come back in line. We will see some savings, probably around $75,000 or so due to fuel costs. So you know that we haven't been transporting kids for a few months, and we'll see some savings in that regard. And then we're fairly on par with equipment as well. So ending March for financials, we had just under $10 million in our general fund, which equates to 64 days of operating cash on hand. So those were our financials. If you have any questions?
Well, I'll do the motion in a second, and then we can open.
Yes, what, just go ahead and do that.
Yep, so is there a motion to approve item 4.1, approval of the March 2020 financials?
So moved, Bab.
Second stand. Yeah.
Any, any questions or discussion on item 4.1, the March financials?
I don't have any questions with this. Has there been any discussion with everything that's happened with COVID of, as we plan for the future of any, of how this is going to impact our school financials?
Um, I mean, in the actual, you know, short term, we're realizing some savings.
Right, right.
Operationally. Long term, I mean, there's always scuttle. I will say that the 2021, for this upcoming fiscal year, the budget's already enacted. I will say that the 2021, for this upcoming fiscal year, the budget's already enacted. The governor already signed that budget as part of the biennial budget. So I don't personally see any changes occurring. What would have to happen is the governor would have to declare a fiscal emergency for, you know, the year. And in that case, they would have to go back through legislation to make any changes to the funding that's already been approved for next year. So I guess it's possible, if this keeps going on, that that could potentially happen. But I would say, at least for our May forecast, we won't have any information on that. I have us flatlined, I don't have us having any reductions. And then, obviously, over the next upcoming months, we will obviously know more and we'll be able to, that's a direction the government may need to go in based off of how long this lasts, or at least how long it looks like it's going to be completely shut down. Or as we start to go forward, obviously, hopefully, the economy will bounce back and this will be a blip in the radar. But at least I know for as far as fiscally, we are okay on our cash balances this year and next year and even into the following year. So in the short term, I don't feel like we have anything to worry about. It would be more long-term effects if this would continue, potential delays in property tax collections, and then ultimately for '22 and beyond, potentially some reductions in state funding if it don't make a change. You know, if you've heard anything, Carrie, maybe in your superintendent meetings. I know there's a lot of concerns, us treasurer have been talking about it as well. It's just, it would take a lot, I think, for the governor to go back on a budget he's already approved, unless they just could not fiscally, you know, carry out those plans.
No, we, I haven't heard anything about the, the state budget, no.
Like I said, it's already been approved. They approved, it's a biennium, so they approved two years, they approved fiscal '20 and fiscal '21, and those have already been enacted and signed into law by the governor and the House bill and everything else that came with it. So it would take a process. And then they would have to get school districts input, you know, community input and everything before they made a decision. And especially for school districts who are already in a lot of fiscal trouble right now, they would be similarly, if they tried to reduce anything, you know, for next year.
Right, right. So, okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or discussion on item 4.1? No? Okay.
So Stukey?
Abstain.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Bilaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. So item 4.2, I think, is the approval of a donation from, of $100 from the very generous Charles Anderson to be used toward the STEM Fest program. Is there a motion to approve item 4.2?
So move that. We can't get it right, Dan. Dan takes it.
You do the next one, you do the next one. Put myself on you.
Okay, any discussion or questions on this one?
Thanks, Charles.
Yeah, thank you, Charles.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do the voting. Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
I put abstain, um, just so you don't vote on yours. That's okay. And then Lisa?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, and then we can vote on the last ones altogether.
Right, yeah, do you want to run through those, items 4.3 through 4.6?
Sure. I wrote, due to COVID-19, we'd like to ask for the board's permission to move the STEM Fest donation that the board approved to be used this year, to move it to be used for next year. So that way, they can hold on to that donation, knowing that they will be utilizing it in their planning for next year. Item 4.4 is an approval of a donation from North Truman for $400 to be used towards the Springbrough Robotics Program. Item 4.5, approval of a donation of $65 for the student lunch meal balances, which, as of right now, that has $950 in that donation account. Item 4.6 is approval of a donation of $700 to the Wayne Kemper Scholarship Fund. And then, the next is.
Yep. So item 4.7 seeks the approval of 4.3 through 4.6. Is there a motion to approve?
So move that.
Second, Anderson.
Any discussion or questions?
Okay, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Bilaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, I believe now we can move into the interim superintendent section. Ms. Hester?
Yes. So we met virtually with Neola and Norm. It was a really efficient policy meeting. I'm presenting to you all the first reading of many policies that really are all about getting us compliant with changes in state law. And for a lot of the, on the employment side, the HR pieces, the change is that we needed language that states that there will be verification between the superintendent and treasurer on all licenses being valid and correct for the individual we're employing. We've already been doing this for a year, but we needed language in our policies. So this is a first reading, and I can help you through any questions or concerns you might have as you prepare for the second reading.
Does this make you both accountable? Like, in the past, it's been Tara that has been accountable. If we have somebody that is not, doesn't have the right credentials for a position, does now it put both of you at a level of responsibility if we had somebody in place?
Yes, because there was a change to the Ohio Revised Code and naming the superintendent and the treasurer. So we needed to get our board policies aligned.
That makes sense, thank you.
Hey, Carrie.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. So on the policy 8420.01, that's the pandemic and other medical emergencies. I mean, is that in response to any laws, or is that just Neola's attempt to try to put something together?
It's best, it's best practice. When this all started, we didn't have anything in board policy, because who thought we would be in a pandemic? So this is kind of a reactionary recommendation. There is no law at this point. I'm sure something will come down the pike here eventually, but this is just to get us.
So I guess my follow-up question to that is, if it's not, you know, anything we're legally bound to, at least through Ohio, is some of that, I'm assuming, is probably going to cost us some money to, to get compliant with that policy? Do we have any idea if that's?
Um, Ronwin. Ronwin really worked hard with Norm on our, on those 84s to make sure that our policy aligned to what we already do. You know, in terms of temperature to, to return to school, what, what we currently do for a lot of infectious diseases, like strep throat, chicken pox, yeah. I'm sorry, Rob.
So it, it pretty much just mirrors what, what this is already stating we've got in hand already. It's just, this is more formalizing it.
Yes. But in terms of COVID and cost to make us compliant, to go, to come back to school, we're very much just starting those discussions on PPE and, and temperature checks and that.
And again, that's where I hope that statewide, we would start to get some assistance there. I mean, there's going to be districts that, there's no way they're going to be able to, you know, provide those supplies and things like that.
Right. And also, the 84s, Ronwin worked hip to hip with Norm, but then she has a very good connection that she works with frequently from the Warren County Health Department. So they were revised that way, too.
Great. Okay, thanks, my phone, questions I had?
Carrie, I have a question with the employment contract 4124. It's for us. I'm just not sure what, what was, why was this added?
So that was, it's primarily for a civil service district, which we are not, but we do have contract language that states that we offer a one-year probationary period for our classified employees. So we just went ahead and put that in there.
So help me understand what, who this would be for. I'm just not familiar with that language.
So anybody in the SCEA, bus drivers, educational assistants, we have a one-year probationary period in which, if it wasn't working out, we could go through the process of saying thank you, but it isn't working out.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on, on 5.1, any of these policies? And I believe, because this is first reading, where there's no action that we need to take on item 5.1. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions or discussion before we move on? Okay, then we can move to item 5.2, the approval of the personnel report.
So members of the board, Mr. President, I present to you the, gosh, I guess this is the March and April Personnel Report. We have a few retirements, a bus driver who we knew was going to retire. She's been with us for a number of years in a variety of capacities, but ended her career with us as a bus driver. And then we have a few teacher resignations, and they will do the exit surveys so that we can learn more upon their leave of what we can do better, what we did great. I do know that two of them, though, are due to moves out of state. And then, of course, we all, I let you all know of Randy Bargo Smith, who we're going to miss tremendously. And Mr. Franks is beginning that process of interviewing for his next assistant principal.
Is there a motion to approve item 5.2?
So move that. Somebody help.
Tara, you'd like placards or something. I'll second, this is Dan.
And then I have Stan, okay, Dan's second, okay.
Okay, any discussion or questions on the personnel report?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Finney. I know she's been doing reading intervention for a long, long time. So sorry to see her go, but congrats on the retirement.
Okay.
On this, is there Tara?
I think it's next. It's next. So there's no athletics on this one.
Excuse me.
Bless you. Okay, so Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Bilaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, then I think we can move into item 5.3, approval of the athletic personnel report.
Yes, and 5.3 is the athletic report that we are seeking your approval of Jamie Timpton to be the girls' varsity head soccer coach.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item 5.3?
Charles, so moved.
Second, Dan.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
I've heard wonderful things about her. I don't know who she is, but I got a couple texts from people saying she's amazing. So good job on whoever found her.
Okay, I will start. Stukey?
Abstain.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Bilaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, we now move into, who's doing this one? Carrie, are you doing this one? 6.1, or is that Emily?
Rob does not have anything, and then it moves straight to Emily on my.
Okay. Okay.
So Emily. Needs to be unmuted.
Yeah, she, she has, she can unmute herself, I think she's looking for something.
I didn't see myself on there, which is actually why I was like, I'm next? Because I didn't see me on there.
I assume this is yours, the Student Service and Private Placement Contract?
So that is actually under Rob, but yes, it is.
Okay.
A private placement contract, there's two, but interim Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Operations. So I, that was actually Rob, but that's, I think, why I was a little confused.
That's why it was confusing me as well. I know, I was looking at what the item was, but I'm like, that doesn't seem like it.
I thought there was a reason why it was under Rob and not me, but, so yeah.
I guess that was it, sorry.
Separate facility, private facility contract for a student. It's a temporary placement, but for a student who has those needs for that placement.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item 6.1?
So moved. Great.
And then, Rob? I didn't know about. Oh, sorry.
Second, second, Anderson, okay.
Okay, now we can have discussions, questions. Yep.
Yeah, I do have a question. With us not going back into the building, are we, are they being served by, like remotely from that location then? And then is the charge just the same because they're, they are receiving equal services?
Correct. That is, that they are updating me pretty much weekly in the event that they cannot access the student. And, but funding is remaining the same, really, for the, for the, for the reason that if it wasn't, then we would be providing compensatory services in the end. It's not to say that we won't have to at some point. However, the employee, they're still paying those employees to do that job. So even though they may be trying and reaching out to those families and, and majority of them are successful in doing exactly what we're doing in district, but if not, we would be, we would lose out on that spot, per se. So if we didn't continue to pay that, we would lose out on that spot and not guaranteed. They wouldn't be able to continue to hire, have those people employed. And then you would, we would risk not being able to have that service when, if we returned back to normal.
So if we didn't have that need, though, I guess I'm, I'm just looking at the amount that, that we were paying, that we are paying.
This particular student, they are providing those services.
They are.
With the exception of somebody, yes, they are. They are providing those. It was something, it was a placement we started just right prior to this break. Obviously, I think it would be better if he was actually in that facility, receiving those services, just like all of our students. But at this point in time, that's obviously not an option. So they are still working with him, receiving therapeutic care and, and things like that.
Okay. The question was if we're paying that much and they're not getting the services, that's a concern. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on 6.1?
Okay, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Bilaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Thank you, Miss Phil, sorry for the confusion there. So now I think we move into Section 7, the Board Member Reports, Comments, Questions, Announcements, and Future Considerations. And so the first item is actually the approval of a resolution for the continued operation of schools for the remainder of the year. So, Ms. Hester, I don't know if you want to give sort of a brief overview, and then we can do sort of the motion in a second and open it up for, for questions and discussion, as I'm sure there will be a lot, as it relates to this one.
So this was what our, what the board's legal firm advised that we do in light of COVID-19. And due to, we had spring break, so this optimally would have been done in March, but this is our first board meeting since then. So we have been doing many of these things, all of these things, actually. So this just gives us the formal approval from the Board of Education to continue education remotely, as we are doing, to close the buildings physically, which we've done. It also suspends the current board policy on grading and gives us the ability, in light of COVID-19, for the flexibility of a modified grading approach for students. It talks about the graduation requirements, which we are following the state guidelines on. It allows for what we're doing this evening to have a virtual board meeting. And then it also allows for the superintendent and treasurer to deem evaluations impractical or impossible. In terms of teacher evaluations, we have reached an MOU, an understanding with the union, that we will finish up the remaining evaluation that we're not completing. the remaining evaluation that were not completed before we left on March 13th. Virtually, the administration, the principals will meet with those teachers that had one final observation left or post-conference that they had to do, and those will all be conducted virtually. And we signed that MOU in agreement. But in terms of the classified employees, many of those, if not all of those, are done in May and June on a typical school year calendar. So some of those are going to have to be deemed impractical to do at this time. We do not have any employees that we were concerned with, so we are okay if we deem these impractical and move on to next year. We'll be able to do some classified employees if they're 260 employees for us, and we can do those once we get back on site. Those are the, those are the big pieces. Oh, and the other thing I did not mention was the pay for our supplemental spring sports. They were just hanging out there on pause, ready to go into action, when the Ohio Athletic Association said that we could resume sports, which, as we all know now, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, that that order came down that there would be no spring sports.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do sort of the motion in a second, and then we can open it up for further discussion and questions. So is there a motion to approve item 7.1?
So moved back.
Second, Dan.
Okay, now we will open.
I, I do have an email from Bronwyn. It's a, it was a response to Dan's question. I'll just read it to you here. So Bronwyn said the COVID-19 policy and guidelines are anticipated to be coming as we have more information from the Ohio Department of Health and the CDC moving forward on a return to school.
Great, thank you, that's helpful, thank you for sharing that.
So Carrie, when you said that about the coaches, what are we doing with the coaches that, are we paying them? Are we paying them partial, are we not paying them at all?
We are paying them their full supplemental contract. They did do, before COVID hit, there was conditioning and fundraising for a lot of the spring sports, and then boom, COVID hit. But they have been reaching out to their athletes. They've, you know, encouraged individual exercising and continuing with the physical activity. They've not just been dormant, they've been involved with their athletes. And then they were prepared to begin spring sports in a modified fashion, beginning May 1 if they were allowed, but they're not now.
Okay.
Are you guys looking at any specific grading scale for the fourth quarter? Pass, fail, or something like that?
Yes, and Andrea, because you worked very closely with the administrative team, could you speak to the at-home learning grading for fourth quarter? Everybody should have a, it's part of an attachment, the description.
I would be happy to. Our grading for fourth quarter for grades two through 12 will be a pass/fail, and because we are on a percentage grading system, we will need to record a percentage. Any student who fails will receive a 59, which is our highest failing grade. Any student who passes will receive a 100. If they are in a class with weighted grading, such as an honors course, they will receive an extra five. If they are in an AP course, they will receive an extra 10. So all grade cards will either have a 59, 100, 105, or 110 recorded. Any student who is failing, we are working very closely with families to get those students up to speed and attempt to get them to the passing level. Any families, we are not able to get to those students with a passing grade. We are making every attempt and documenting those attempts in an effort to have the counselors, the teachers, the administrators assist those families with success for fourth quarter.
So how will athletics be determined eligibility? Will it be looked at third quarter, or will it be looked at pass or fail fourth quarter?
Fourth quarter. So students need to be passing five classes for fourth quarter, so we'll be doing the same type of eligibility we have in the past.
Okay, okay. And are we mailing home report cards like normal?
We will be mailing home report cards as well as our nationally normed tests that we're taking, as such as Iowa's, COGATs. We'll be mailing home information on progress for students on a WEP. So parents will be getting a lot of information in the mail once the quarter closes.
Okay, okay.
Students who are in kindergarten and first, I neglected to bring up, are on standards-based grading. So their grade cards will be indicative of a narrative as to where they are. So their receiving teacher and the families know what the students have achieved this year, as well as what they need to work on. We are also collecting information from our teachers, so their receiving teachers know where to start next year on areas in which we may not have been able to successfully complete those standards this year.
So for students that are in an honors, like math class as an eighth grader, are they getting the extra five points also? So they'll have 105 if they pass?
If they're in honors algebra or honors geometry, they will.
Okay. Has there been conversations? I was on a webinar with a group of superintendents with stuff on equity, and they were, there was, and this was around the state, or around the United States. And there was discussions around, depending on what the fall is going to look like, our planning for the future, and what are we going to be doing of even what our September, October, August, September, Octobers are going to look like for teachers, even in catching up? If, even if life looks normal, you know, in August and September, how are we going to catch up, you know, the, the time that was missed for our students? What are we doing in, because I 100% support this. I think that we're making the right decisions here. I'm just curious what we as a district are doing to think ahead for the fall of how we're going to support the students that are missing some of the things where we're used to having that contact with the teachers.
We're collecting information from the current teachers, and the receiving teachers will be working on assessments to find out where the students are when they come in. So that would include any standards that were unable to be covered this spring, as well as any summer slide or slide from a lack of on task throughout spring and into summer.
So we'll be prepared to start the year differently with what we normally do the first, okay.
We're right on top of it.
We started today.
It's a lot to take in, I know.
Hey Andrea, this is Dan, I've got maybe a slightly off-topic question, but maybe, maybe you'll have an answer. If I recall, and I may be off-base here, a lot of the gifted identification took place in the second half of the year. Is that true? And if so, is, are we going to have to pause that for a year, or is there an alternative to?
That's a great question. Much of our gifted identification comes through COGATs and Iowa's that were taken in February.
Okay.
So those tests identify students for giftedness and gifted placement. We do have families who do have the opportunity, by all means, to request testing. We are unable to complete that testing due to testing protocols, so we're working with those families individually to come up with a plan for their youngsters for next year. However, under no circumstances can we test from a distance. So we will, we are using those identifications from the COGATs and Iowa's.
Okay, great, thank you, that's really helpful.
You're welcome.
I was hearing a lot of, not from my kid, but a lot of anxiety from some about end-of-semester exams and that type of thing. And I just appreciate that we're looking holistically at our students, not wanting to say that academics are not important at all, but for some students that academics are so important. I think the fear of not having a teacher there, even though they're there for question-answer, sometimes you don't know the questions to ask a teacher to know, just because that teaching has not been there. And they've been very accessible, very accessible. But I know, like, my sixth grader has joined in some times that they've had, you know, joined in our ELA with the teacher, and what he is getting from that versus what he was trying to get from me as I'm trying to work and going, come on, you gotta do this, this, this. It's night and day difference. And so, and that's just at a sixth-grade level. And when I think about our high school students that really care, because this is going to impact their, you know, what colleges they get into and things, I just appreciate the approach that we're taking, because I feel like we are looking at the mental health of our students and that whole child. Though, and I don't want it to be that we don't care about academics at all, because I truly don't think that's where it's at. But I do want to communicate that we care about our families and we care about how our students are processing everything. And I think that what we have here is, is communicating that, that there still is an expectation, you still need to be involved. You still are going to be questioned if you're not getting on and doing anything at all. But, you know, you're not going to be held accountable for those second semester exams like you typically would be. So I appreciate the approach that we're taking and how spelled out this document is with the details around it. And I think that a lot of families will be very, very appreciative with what, how we're approaching it as a district.
I, I can speak for, at the building level, the layers of support that everybody is stepping up to the plate to provide is beyond amazing. With the success plans in terms of if we know we have a red flag with students that are not turning in assignments, or they're really behind, the layers of support between counselors, administrators, our resource coordinators, that they are giving to each and every single child. The few that, that we will have to give the incompletes to will be because they truly just tapped out. It will not be because we did not make a truly concerted effort to reach out multiple, multiple times to, to develop some level of success remotely for every student.
And I know the families that, like, I'm thinking of some that Kyle, you have spoken to, the stress that it has removed from them, once you have talked to them, night and day difference. So, you know, I just, I think that's critical at times like this, where they're, for whatever reason, whether it's, you know, there's somebody in their family that is dealing with everything that we're working through right now in our country, or whether it's just anxiety for, because everybody is in the house and none of us are used to that, and people are trying to work, or people lost jobs. I just think what we as a district and how we're interacting when they come to us. And, I mean, I've emailed teachers at four o'clock in the morning when I get up and I see Fs, I'm like, what is happening here? And we're involved parents, and I'm like, oh my gosh. But the teachers have been really good. I mean, walking me through, okay, go to here, go to here, and try this. So they've been fabulous with walking us through, but there's, you know, they also, like, I'm thinking about Darren's language, our teachers, both parents are teachers, and they have three kids of their own that they're trying to do this with too. So everybody is in a really, really hard situation that none of us asked to be in. So I just think that this system that we have in place right here is taking care of all of us, our staff, our families, our students as a whole. It's doing the right thing for Springboro as a whole, so I just really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Jamie, oh wait, we have a chat.
Oh, we do.
Oh, it's Jamie.
My sound has flipped out. Oh, poor Jamie, okay. I wonder if I unmuted myself, but I don't, he walked away, so I'm not sure.
Take over, Dan, we can go on.
I was going to say, Vice President.
I'm pressing it, and it's like, battlefield promotion. So I think, in Jamie's absence, item 7.2, the approval of the MOU by, in between the SCEA and the Springboro Board of Education. Carrie, do you want to run us through that one?
Yes, and this is just kind of a, just a safety measure, because we were in the midst of negotiations with the SCEA on their wage increase. And that session had to be postponed or canceled due to COVID. We tried for another reschedule in March, and now we know we cannot meet again. So this gives us until May 15th to extend those negotiations without any penalty or any kind of grievance that could occur, to set a date and re-meet again to start back up where we left off.
Any questions on, well, do we need to, need to vote on that, and then?
No, that's, I just wanted you, I just wanted you all to know where we were, because two board members are involved in that. And, and I just felt it was good for you all to know.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like we have an action item to actually vote on both of those resolutions, 7.1 and 7.2 separately.
Okay.
So we'll do 7.1.
Okay, so, can I have a, do I need a motion to vote?
Yes, a motion to approve 7.1, which is the resolution to continue operations of school during the pandemic, and the executive.
And the MOU.
That's the first one, that's the first one, the MOU's second, so yeah, that's, the first one is the, it says approval of resolution to continue operations. So we need a motion.
So moved.
I need a motion.
Darren second. Charles second.
Perfect. I'll go ahead and just do roll call since we've already talked. Okay, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Bellage?
He's going to give a thumbs up wherever he is.
Yeah, just to make sure he I don't know, I think he went off to, oh wait, he's coming, so hold on, he's, there he is. Hold on one second, and then we'll ask him, he's, should be coming on here, I just.
Hey.
Okay, are you there?
I'm back, I have no idea what happened.
You're okay, we just went through the motion 7.1 to approve the resolution for, to continue operations, and everybody's voted, and, well, except for you and Dan Good, so.
Do you need me to vote?
Yes, say yes.
Yes.
And then Good?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that, I'm guessing that was my nightly Spectrum Internet going on. I did just want to add, before we move on to the next subject, I just filled on what Mrs. Babbitt said. I appreciate the flexibility that she's shown to really sort of work with all of our families. I know we've had some conversations, I think it's next to impossible to ensure that everybody would be receiving sort of an equitable experience during this time. So, you know, trying to assign a grade down to a specific, you know, percentage, I, I think is really next to impossible, just given the circumstances, because again, everybody's dealing with, you know, a lot of different things at the moment. And so, you know, in the interest of, you know, the fact that we're not able to provide that, that level of equity, I think this is the right decision, and appreciate, you know, the, the care and attention that, that everybody is putting on our students, the whole child, as Mrs. Babbitt said, so I just wanted to read her my thanks as well. Okay, so now we can move to item 7.2, which is a, an MOU between the SCEA and the Board of Education. which is a, an MOU between the SCEA and the Board of Education. We were due to begin renegotiating the contract that is up at the end of this year. But obviously, that has been affected by our current circumstances. And so this MOU seeks to postpone that. Ms. Hester, do you want to add any more about that before we do the motion? In a second, and open it up for discussion and questions?
We actually were discussing that when we lost you.
Sorry.
Your vice president. Your vice president took over for a minute.
Okay.
I might want to mute wherever that extra noise is coming from.
I think, I think they muted themselves.
Okay, I wasn't sure. If anybody else is hearing that or, okay.
So yeah.
So we've been through this one. Okay, you've explained it.
We just need to vote.
Perfect, thank you.
So we need a motion.
Is there a motion?
So move. Charles.
Dan will second.
Awesome. Okay, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, we'll new, now move to announcements and future considerations. Trying to remember what order we sit in on the, at the table when we're together. I think it's Ms. Bab. You usually start.
I pretty much have shared where I'm at. I just have been very impressed with how you as an administrative team have really approached such an unprecedented, unprecedented thing that has happened to us. So I just appreciate how you're taking care of families and our students and are tweaking things along the way. And I've seen in both of, I have one at the high school and one at SI, how both of our teachers are tweaking things and responding to things that the kids need. So I just really appreciate that because I think that they're looking to do what the kids are needing and they're learned, like, it was obvious they're saying they needed some more one, or, you know, face-to-face time with the teachers. And so the teachers responded with that and they're giving that. And the kids are definitely responding to that. So I just, I think that they've been really open to feedback from what is needed. And they didn't know, because, we didn't know. None of us knew. Because this is so, you know, something that none of us have experienced. So I just want to commend all of you who have worked through that. And also to the high school team, administrative team, that is working through everything with graduation and just keeping that as a priority to figure out a way, even if it looks very different. And I know we were trying to do something with prom up until, you know, we pushed it as far as we could. So, you know, I appreciate that, that's something that we're trying to keep. As many things as possible that we could keep for memory makers for the high schoolers. So I appreciate that. Okay, I'm muting again. Sorry, my kids are loud.
Okay, then I think it usually goes next to Mr. Anderson.
Nothing from me except, you know, thanks. Thanks for all the work the administrative team has done. I know this is, all of a sudden, you're here one day and then you find out schools close the next. And now, then everybody anticipates it's going to be open and then now we know it's not. And now we find out that perhaps in the fall, it might be a combination of both. And that'll, that'll take a whole nother set of discussion because by that time, everybody will have been used to it. It won't be a surprise. And now we're going to start the whole year off. So it'll have to be looked in a different light than perhaps what it is now. So flexibility, I guess that would be a word I would use for, for all of you. And you're all to be commended for that.
That's it.
Thank you, Charles. Mr. Stukey?
Wanted to thank Kerry and her central office staff, you know, just like Charles said, for doing such a great job under the poor conditions that you're facing. And same with the school administrators and, and your staff. You can pass on, you know, that, from everything I've heard, they've done a great job. And, you know, we just got to finish it out through this May and hopefully move on to some, something normal coming up here before the new school year. So thanks to everyone.
Mr. Good?
Yeah, I think, you know, I go with everybody said so far. And I'll say that, you know, I've been, you know, with two school-aged kids myself, you know, I've been very up close and personal with the distance learning that's going on right now. And all I can say is I'm, I'm extremely impressed, not only with the quality of, you know, the instruction they're getting, but the enthusiasm, the creativity that, you know, that's being displayed by all the teachers is really impressive. And, you know, I tend to measure things based on the enthusiasm that my kids show. And, you know, I was kind of, in my, my mind, I was expecting the first week to be cool. It'd be new, it'd be something different. And then it would kind of, you know, wane, but it hasn't. I mean, they looked forward to those Google meets. They looked forward to chatting with their friends and their teachers. They looked forward, again, all the creativity that they've seen, that I've seen from the, the instructors. So again, it just goes to show like what a special, you know, group of, of people that we have working at Springboro. Because I, I find it hard to believe that every, every district's, you know, getting the, the experience that our students are doing. So again, kudos to you. And again, I hope that, beyond the, the teaching, that everybody stands safe. And, you know, we'll, better days will be here soon. But again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Good. Very well said. Yeah, I would just echo what, I think all of the board members have really said. You guys have all said it very well. Just want to extend my thanks as well to all of our administrators, our teachers, our staff. It's just, we've all been kind of, you know, learning on the go here. You know, and it's, it's just, it's really remarkable to just, to see how everybody's come together and, and the creativity and, and just, again, appreciate the flexibility that we've shown and really keeping our students, the focus of all of our decisions and, and keeping their sort of needs, you know, in the forefront. And again, just really want to, I know these are, it's not ideal. And, and again, just really appreciate all of the, the hard work that has gone into making the best of the, of the current circumstances. So again, just like the other board members have indicated, just really want to express our thanks. Everybody's really stepped up. And like Mr. Good said, it really shows just the quality of folks that we have here in the district. And I know I'm extremely appreciative of everybody's effort. And again, thank you to the, the folks that have the donations that we, that we approved earlier. Appreciate all the, you know, I know we had to postpone STEM Fest, but appreciate all the work that went into planning that. And we'll go into planning the next event. I know that's a great event. It's unfortunate that we were, had to postpone it, that we were unable to hold it. But, but look forward to, to bringing that back next year. And again, thank you to all of the other folks that, that donated as well. So I did not have anything else. I don't know, Mr. Marshall, are there any questions that have come in? Before we move into the?
No questions.
The next item, no questions. Anybody else have any announcements or future considerations under item 7.3?
I just wanted to echo what the board members have said about the administrative team. This has been incredibly challenging for all of us. None of us even have our typical commute home to kind of turn off and switch gears as educators into real people. So the boundaries that we typically have, we have had, we don't, we're, we're working non-stop, 12, 14-hour days. And I just want to say thank you. And our teachers have truly stepped up to be that, the frontline quiet heroes that I, that I said that they were because they are really the ones that are making this happen. And then I also wanted to say, and, and we'll communicate this too as a district, but we are so appreciative of all the feedback and the suggestions that community members and parents are giving us to try to recognize students and bring some type of normal ceremonial recognition to a school year, not just graduation, but other things, because the end of the school year is always an exciting time. And they want to somehow recognize that. And we will be as creative as we can, but we also need to say that we can't, through something that is planned, create more risk or break or defy orders from our state. So if we sometimes can't do something that has been suggested, it's just because we can't all of a sudden now have, because of something we planned, 100 people have come to one area and we've defied an order. So we have to keep that in consideration as we plan things to end the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Hester. Any other announcements or future considerations? Okay, then the next item is 8.1, which seeks to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Bab. Oh, I'll step away.
Second, second, Dan.
Okay, any questions or discussion? I would just issue my reminder that everything that is discussed in executive session should remain in executive session.
Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Bellage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. So we will now enter into executive session on a separate call. And there will be no action that follows the executive session. So thank you, everybody, for your attendance tonight and for your patience as we worked through our, probably our first virtual school board meeting. So it went reasonably well. So appreciate, appreciate your patience as we worked through some technical difficulties here and there throughout the call. So I, like Mr. Good said, I hope everybody is staying safe and I look forward to hopefully seeing all of you in person very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.